Hi, good evening. We will call this meeting to order for Wasika Public Schools Board of Education. Today is Thursday, December 15th, 2023. No, today is, we didn't change the date on the agenda. Today is Thursday, January 19th, 2023. It is 5:30 PM. We are in the central building, second floor conference room. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. We also have Elizabeth Fury, of course, joining us remotely, and also Heather Harms and Linda Holopeter from our Special Education Department are joining us virtually as well. So first on the agenda tonight is to welcome our new member, Alyssa Bowers. She was not able to be at our organizational meeting, so tonight we need to administer the oath of office to Alyssa, so welcome. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve this vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district towards fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. And so now I would invite you to read the oath.
Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office. I swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 829 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, and welcome again. Alright, everyone now is dutifully sworn in. Alright, moving on then, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
We make a motion to approve our agenda for today.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Alright, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Next is recognition of visitors. This is our time for open forum. We don't have anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak during this time. Did we receive any emails from anyone? Okay. Anyone at home, you're welcome to send comments to wasikadistrict@gmail.com, and we will read them at a future meeting. Or of course, you're welcome to come in person and speak during the open forum time. Continuing then with payment of claims. Director Scheffert, you had the privilege this month?
I did. I reviewed the claims for the month of December, and so I make a motion, we approve the accounts payable in the amount of $1,433,138, which doesn't include, does not include Denver, December dental, and includes payroll of, no, and also payroll of $865,520.48.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? I did want to note that I asked if Caitlin could kind of change how we look at the employment and contract agenda to make a little bit more clear, and thank you again Caitlin for doing that. If anyone has any suggestions for how to make improvements to the agenda and what we have on here, please feel free to share, but hopefully this is a little bit easier format than what we had before, so. If there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Alright, we will continue then with our information items, beginning with our department report from Special Education. So Eric, if you want to introduce or...
Yes, good evening. And so as part of the work we've been doing this year to help keep the board informed of what's happening in our buildings and our departments, we're continuing with our monthly reports, hearing from our directors or principals to share what's happening with the great work of their buildings, based on our strategic plan, based on what they've developed with their vision cards, with their teams. They'll walk us through what's happening in special education tonight. So our Director of Special Education, Heather Harms, and our Assistant Director of Special Education, Linda Holopeter, are here to share with us tonight their presentation on special ed. Heather?
Alright, very good. Oh, why am I...
We can hear you okay.
Okay, very good. So our district currently has 360 students who receive special education services. In every year, we do a snapshot on December 1st, and so for December 1st of 2022, our count is 360, which is about 19 more than what we had last December 1. Right now, we know that retention and recruitment of licensed special education teachers is difficult, but I'd like to call out that we have 89% of our special education teachers are fully licensed. They're tier three or tier four. Of the 11% that are not special ed licensed, they are elementary licensed, another one staff member's communication degree, and then we have a special education teacher who is working in a different license in special education this year. And I think we have those staff members who are looking on their masters in the area in which we need them to be, so they will be fully licensed coming into the next year or two. Right now, when we look at our staff to student ratios, we have about one staff member for every 17 students, and that, those are students who receive 30, or zero to about 60% special education. It does not account for the students who receive special services only, and it doesn't account for the students who are in more restricted programs that have a caseload max for some of our staff members. So our ratio is 17 to 1 right now, and with our self-contained programs, we have eight different programs throughout the district, and our caseload ratios are about 8 to 1. And then early childhood special education caseloads, they differ, determine on what those special ed teachers are doing. So they can do birth to two, they can do birth to six, they could do ages three to five. Based on that combination determines their caseload, so.
Linda?
Okay, I think we're ready to move on. School districts have a child find obligation under IDEA and Section 504. The child find obligation requires schools to identify, locate, and evaluate if a district has a disability and needs special ed services to address that disability. And this includes all students who reside in the district, whether they're homeschooled, go to a curricular school, or in daycare settings, or even in the home setting. Section 504 imposes an obligation on schools to locate, identify, and evaluate students who are believed to be in need of accommodations or special ed services.
When we looked at our special education vision card last year, we determined that the, our vision card aligns with...
Oh, I think you muted yourself there. Okay, there you go.
Yep. Sorry about that. Our goal in special education is for students to make gains, and so we've linked that to our vision card. Last year, when we pulled our data at the end of the school year, we had 96% of our students were making progress on their goals and objectives. There are some students who, based on a number of factors, struggled to make progress. And that, when that happens, we schedule an IEP meeting and go through a process, but our end data was 96% of our students were making progress on their goals and objectives.
Okay, the activities in each of the focused areas of the strategic plan for special ed include all of these. Work assessment toward gainful employment, that's the GAGE program located in Central Building, and that's particularly junior and senior students who practice work-based learning skills for future job success. We have licensed school social workers working primarily in therapeutic programs to help support the, some of the most significant students who need that support. We just incorporated Dreambox Learning this year, and that's an online interactive program for reading and math, and it's an adaptive health-based program. It's shown to yield rapid gains, so we're hoping that is successful for us. We have a behavioral consultant who supports staff and students with intervention ideas, and part of the evaluation team when emotional behavioral concerns are identified. We're associate memberships with Southwest Metro Independent or Intermediate District. We have the 18 to 21 Transition Program that's located in Central Building, and the students on IEPs who are in this program, they've completed their graduation requirements but have more needs transitioning into adulthood. So the program focuses on skills to increase independence at the home and in the community that they live in. The Passages is a Setting Four program that's in Central Building, and that's for students needing significant emotional or behavioral support. Programs at Southwest Metro Twin Cities Campus are accessible to us, and we send students to the Twin Cities, mainly in Jordan and Chaska, and these might be younger students that are not old enough. The Passages students that we have at Central Building are some of the older students, and some of the younger elementary students might need to be bused to the cities for the support that they need. And other students needing supports, if they're lower functioning or they're ASD, the programs that they have would be supported in the cities. We have a board-certified behavior analyst, and that students that need some more intensive support, staff can request an observation to be done, and the behavior analyst will come and observe and provide suggestions to assist the team with intervention supports or the next steps to help that student be successful.
When we looked at the need in special education in terms of workforce, Linda and I both decided that one of the focuses that we needed to spend significant amount of time on is staff retention as well as staff recruitment. And so we have set up a variety of strategies to work on keeping the staff that we currently have, supporting them in their learning to get licensed in areas that are high needs in special education, as well as reaching out to those that are in programs for special education to get them to look our way.
And so one of our building department highlights is something that Heather just shared, the internal recruitment. So we're making connections, and we have an exciting opportunity to potentially hire a recent college graduate in an opening that we have currently, so that's exciting for us. Along with that, we have, we're pairing with ALC students to have some work experiences with special ed, providing some of that paraprofessional support and job coaching. And we also have a potential candidate for next year if there's an opening. She's excited to come back after she graduates and work for us. But this has been a successful program in wage and the ECSE programs, providing some of that pair of support, because those pairs are so hard to find. We also have program growth to meet the needs of our students. Over the last two years, we've built three, setting three programs in Hartley Elementary, and they are fulfilling the needs that we have, and the students are getting the support that they need in our district without having to be sent elsewhere to get the support that they need. So that's exciting. We've found staff that are fully licensed in those programs, and the students are getting the support that they need. So that's a great success for us.
And that's all we have.
Yeah, the Hartley one is really important, because that was one where we struggled if we were going to... We've had the program at WIS for a number of years, and when we had some new students coming into kindergarten a year ago, so it would have been the 2021, 22 school year, it was, do we have those kids go to WIS? Do we build a program at Hartley? How do we make that work? And we started the program at Hartley, and Heather and Linda both instrumental in that leadership, along with Ben over at Hartley, and we're at three programs, and we have students filling all three of those classrooms. So the need is there, because the students are now staying with us, and as Linda mentioned, not having to find services elsewhere, which is important to be part of our community for those students. So, thank you for that. But any questions we would have for Heather or Linda? That's time for that now, and then...
Yes, my question would be, what percentage comes from outside of Wasika?
We can hear that out and get back to you.
Oh, no problem.
Is that answer to a specific program or just overall?
Just overall.
In general, I would say that a general rule of thumb is when they get to Setting Three, and especially Setting Four, then students from our neighboring districts. So we're a cooperative. We work together with JWP, New Richland, Heartland, Elia, Geneva, and Waterville, Legion, Moorestown. So our two directors are also the directors for those three districts. We share their services. And those students, when they get to be at a high level of need, they do tend to then come to us, because then we can serve them with a larger number of students with us. But we can get the exact number of that, because it's a little bit dependent on the program as well for that too. But there's rough, of all the special education students in those four programs, Wasika has roughly 40% of them. So there's, we're not quite half of all the students in the four district group we're with.
And then obviously, if students that are more Setting One or Setting Two, or they would be served within their home district, they wouldn't come here.
Right, and they're enrolled, and when they come to us, they open enroll with us, they become our students, they're part of the deal. And we certainly don't want to, we're not trying to recruit students away from our neighbors. It just depends on how the student's best served.
I was wondering if you could explain a little more about our relationship with Southwest Metro. That's just come about in the last couple of years, and maybe you could tell us a little bit more about that?
Sure. So we, we are in, I want to say this is our fourth, fourth year with Southwest Metro, and we are associate members, and so what that means is we can access all the programs and services that they offer within their intermediate district. But the only difference from members and associate members is we don't have school board members sitting on the intermediate district's board, school board. So we can access programs, and so they have programs that are 18 to 21 transition. They have student programs, excuse me, for students who struggle with mental health. They have programs for students who are perhaps non-verbal, autism, lower cognitive abilities, career and tech ed. We haven't accessed career and tech ed recently. And they also, last year we started an online program, and so we have had some students transition from some of our site-based programs to their online program. So we initially started conversations with Southwest Metro five, six years ago, because we were coming across students that we didn't have enough to be financially sound, and we didn't have the staff to be able to meet their needs along with the other students we had, and so they have the access of specialized programs that we were able to tap into by becoming associate numbers. And then I think two years ago, the Passages program that's here at Central became a Southwest Metro program instead of a Wasika program. And then we started the 18 to 21 program last year, so it's in the second year, because we started to have a need for our older students who needed some programming. And we had a little bit of space left in Central to be able to provide a classroom for them, so they could stay more local.
Now, the formal relationship looks much like Head Start. They're their own program, they're their own district. Students that enroll in Southwest Metro are Southwest Metro students. They lease space from us in our building. They have their own administrator, they pay their own staff, and then we work together with them based on, as we... Because not all the students in Southwest Metro are necessarily Wasika students. I think more than half of our current group is, but our neighboring districts as well, and then we work together based on, if we don't want to send them to Jordan, because we can serve them right here in Wasika, that's even better. And we work with a tuition bill agreement that we do with any district we would in a situation like that. So it's a, right now, it's a, it's a way for us to serve our students in our district without having to access that support a long bus right away.
And probably reduces transportation costs, I would assume, because that would be our transportation responsibility if they had to go elsewhere.
Right, right. It's actually a very interesting financial agreement, because they lease space from us, but they bill us for the kids. So it's kind of this cycle of Elizabeth and Brian Phil, their district business manager, trying to put all the boxes in the right basket, or however you want to call it, but it serves our students well right now.
I have one more question. You mentioned that, you know, you have, I think it was 95 or 96% of the children made progress, but their goals and objectives. Does that mean, how do you define make progress? And who or how the goals and objectives are created?
So goals are written to be measurable, so they have some data points within them that teachers can determine, based on progress monitoring, that they can determine what their percent is, or how often they're doing something, or reduction of behaviors. And then they determine that if they're making progress based on those data points. If they see, you know, the data is increasing, and then we have a lull and it starts to decline, typically they meet and they talk and they try to figure that out, so that we can get that trajectory going in a positive direction. And then if I can answer the other question?
Right.
Yes, goals are set by the...
Yes, that's what I was going to say, but it's based off the evaluation report. So it's determined by the evaluation team about the results of the testing that's completed, and needs are identified on that evaluation, and that determines the goals and objectives.
Thank you. And usually, you get your progress report, and it'll say it does not meet making progress or has met the objective. And if they make, if they meet the objective, then they write a new goal, so. But yeah, 96% making progress is good, so, yeah.
I had a question. You're talking about staff retention. Does, do you think you struggle more or less with staff retention than maybe the rest of the district? Is it harder to find and keep special ed staff versus the rest?
I don't think we struggle any more than any other district or any other department. There are some of our positions that require a specific special education license, and so it's hard to get sometimes those specific licenses. A lot of colleges, specifically in Minnesota, have gone to a multi-categorical license, but there are some of our programs, such as our site-based programs, that require a special license. So in our programs that focus on student behavior needs and mental health, those teachers need to be licensed in emotional behavior disabilities, EBD. Students that have social communication and some unique needs in those areas, that program requires a teacher to be licensed in autism. And then we also have some programs that work with students who are lower cognitive, and those programs require, depending on the level of the student, mild to moderate, developmentally delayed, or a severe or profound. Sometimes those are really hard to find.
We did an analysis last summer, and we are not anywhere, we are right with the norm in terms of our turnover rate, retention rate for special ed teachers compared to our region. So, because we wanted to make sure, because there is a little bit higher turnover in that department than, say, our regular ed teachers, because some of the licensure things that Heather mentioned, that sort of thing. It is a stressful position, those sorts of things. And we wanted to make sure that we were, you know, if there's anything else we could do, we would, but we're right with the rest of the region on that particular piece. But I'm pleased that that's a goal, and I'm pleased that it's something we're focusing on this year, because it's, we can hire teachers, but if we can't keep them, then it doesn't, we're just going to be chasing our tails. So I appreciate that work.
Any other questions?
I'm just wondering if you could go a little bit deeper dive into what an IEP is. That seems to be pretty central to special education. Could you tell us a little bit more about what it is and how you make one and all of that?
So the foundation of the individual education program is set forth by state and federal statute. And our program that we use, they make sure they're aligned with those responsibilities that we have. So our forms are developed to meet those needs, and we work with our evaluation teams and the testing process to determine eligibility and continuing need to help build that IEP. So the IEP, the core components of the IEP that teachers use would be the goals and objectives, the accommodations and modifications, as well as the information regarding state testing. And all those pieces are built from the present levels of performance that teachers write a story about where the student is and where the student needs to go, both their strengths and the areas of need or struggles.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Heather or Linda? Okay. Well, thank you for that brief glimpse of what is going on in your department right now. I appreciate you both being able to join us tonight, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks Heather, thanks Linda.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, then we will continue then with our superintendent report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, and on this now-not-so-snowy evening after a snowy morning, I'm glad to be here with you tonight, so thanks for making sure we were able to meet yet this evening. So first part of my report tonight focuses on some of the work we're doing with our strategic plan. And as Linda and Heather mentioned, actually as part of their work, we're doing quite a bit of work right now, as we get into the second half of the school year, looking at those student support levels and what students need individually, kind of that personalized learning conversation we've had for the last several years. As we look at our mid-year, mid-year results for our vision cards and how students are performing in their mid-year assessments, we'll be making adjustments here in the next couple of weeks to make sure that the end of the school year is successful for students. At the February 2 workshop, I'll be able to share with you those mid-year results that, for our vision card for this school year, so you get a sense of where we're making progress on our goals, which thus far, I've been extremely impressed with the work our students and staff are doing this school year. We're going to find that we are making progress towards our goals in our vision card, which is encouraging. But we're continuing to find ways to support students in different ways. I think that's the most important thing, is when we talk about all meaning all, meaning we got to get, we have to help support every single student, that looks different for everyone. And I think we are continuing to try to do better at how we continue to keep our system together, while at the same time meet the needs of every single student. So that's a big part of our work. We are going to be doing some significant conversations here in the next few weeks with regards to planning next year's budget. That's a, that's a big part of this school year as we... Elizabeth and I kind of have that ongoing joke of we're, we finally got to put last school year aside now that we're halfway through this one, and now we start thinking about next school year, thinking about how that's going to go and the years after that. So that'll be a big part of our conversation as we look into staffing and how we plan for the next, next school year. Another, another big topic that's going to meet our, meet our needs of our strategic plan, particularly with, I think about student support, is we'll be having some conversations in the upcoming... is we'll be having some conversations in the upcoming months about facilities, what we want to do with our overall facility plan. Facility committee meets next week here for the first time in this calendar year. We'll have a conversation about what our next steps are there. We don't have anything necessarily previously set. We just kind of set, see where the committee is and where we want to head from that direction. And then the part that we'll also be moving forward when it comes to your strategic plan is, is, you know, this was the two thousand nineteen through twenty-four strategic plan. So we'll be starting this spring doing some work with our administration, with our directors and principals and some staff, kind of setting some groundwork, getting some present levels of what we're at with our strategic plan. So that as we get into the next fall with the board, we'll start looking at what our refresh looks like for our next five-year strategic plan. And where are gaps, where are strengths, what's going well. We want to prepare this spring for you as a leadership team, all the information that you might need next fall as a board to be able to say, here's where we sit as a district. And as we craft that next strategic plan together, what are things we need to focus on, and what are some things that are kind of redundant in our current plan? That's what was the, one of the primary drivers of the vision card model is if we're measuring multiple focus areas with the same thing, then they probably don't need to be two different focus areas. If we're using just the same measure to measure them all, we just have to have a little bit more broad focus area and work that along. But we're getting to that in the fall. So continuing to move that, I mentioned the strategic plan almost every meeting just because I think it's such an important part of our work to keep things moving forward as a district. The next thing I wanted to cover tonight is really just some introduction to the legislative session. We have a legislative session that began the first week of January, and they'll head through the end of May, doing their work, trying to find out, this is a bonding, I'm sorry, this is a financial year, so they'll be able to figure out what we're going to do for funding for the next biennium this, this year. Right now, as is no secret to anyone, the big discussion is the surplus that the state is dealing with right now. Seventeen billion dollars is a lot of money. One thing that was made loud and clear to us as a legislative committee, but also up at MSBA last week, is, you know, twelve billion of that is one-time money. And so we have to be cautious, and legislature has to be cautious as they allocate that, those dollars, that things are sustainable in whatever they choose to put them towards. We're obviously advocating for, for funding for public education in the right place. MSBA, MASA, our special education group, our facilities groups, our elementary principal association, all of those different organizations all have legislative platforms. They're all presenting to them. The theme tends to be the ask right now is five percent on the per pupil formula in each of the years of the, of the biennium, and to address that special education cross-subsidy for, for the district, which, for districts, which would be a positive step towards, towards funding our, what we need to do here. Last Tuesday, the governor was, it was Tuesday, yeah, he was in an elementary school, and he did talk about what his initial proposal was going to be. And his proposal was four percent and two percent for the two years of the, of this next biennium, and fifty percent of the special ed cross-subsidy, as well as twenty-five percent of the English language learned across subsidy. And across subsidy, what that means, just as a review, is that we, we get reimbursed for part of our special education costs, but not all of our special education costs. So our general fund has to then subsidize that additional cost that we incur to serve those students. And the federal law and the state law are in, in conflict in terms of what we're supposed to be getting funding for. And so it's been a point of contention for districts for a number of years. It's been that way for, for a long, long time. And so if, if those things were to come to be, that would be positive for our school district. For reference, roughly one point eight million dollars is a special education cross-subsidy based on last year's report. It's going to be maybe a little bit less than that this year, but similar, right around there. And a two, a four percent increase to the formula would be about two hundred and seventy-five dollars per pupil. So keep that in mind as to what that would be, times the one thousand seven hundred and fifty-ish students that we have in our district for that. Another hot topic that the governor is really interested in is fully funding meals for students. That seems to be getting some traction, based on what I've seen in the first week or so. That is something that we're going to be watching carefully because there are some other impacts that come from that. Much of our funding, Title I funding, some compensatory funding, some of our additional funding that comes from the federal, federal sources is based on our free and reduced count of our, of our students, and how many students receive free and reduced lunch. If everyone is receiving free meal, we saw this during the pandemic. If everyone is receiving free meals, it was really challenging to get families to fill out the forms to see if they qualified for free and reduced lunch, because they didn't need to to receive the benefit. What we found was that first year of the pandemic, it basically reduced our funding by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a district, because our free and reduced count went down that much, because people just didn't feel the need to, or people were doing better financially. I don't know the answer to that, but my assumption is we didn't get as many, you know, forms in. Districts tend to stay relatively consistent in that manner. They've now added some direct qualifications through Medicaid, and so we expect that to go back up a little bit for next year. And of course, students are paying for lunch this year, which saw, was a positive thing in terms of having to fill out forms. Because really, what you want is you want an accurate count of how your community is doing with free and reduced lunch need. I don't necessarily think there's a positive or negative to it being high or low, but you want an accurate count because that drives your funding for your district. And so free meals for everyone could again put us in a position of having to do our best to, to help make sure we qualify all students that have that need. There are additional benefits that come with that, like activities and things like that, other scholarship opportunities. But, you know, if a family is not interested in filling out the form, if they don't have to, for whatever confidentiality reason they have, it's challenging to entice them if they're already getting that. So, do we want all kids to eat healthy meals? Of course we do. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's necessarily a negative intended process, but there are tales to it. We've made our legislators aware of that, so hopefully they can get that, that through the process. The governor also said fully funding, he said fully funding schools several times. He hasn't defined, I guess now he finally defined what that meant to him for that. And then funding for mental health and school support also was verbally mentioned by the governor with no, there wasn't a specific dollar attached to that, or what that means. I think that what's really important for a district like Wasika that already has a signi, we already have a significant amount of student support staff in our buildings, what would be important is that we can use that for what we need it to, either to, you know, fund the current positions we have, do some different programming. You know, you, we have to be cautious that the answer is just not hiring another staff member. We have to, when we're providing the programming that we have, and we're being successful with it, we have to be conscious of who will use that money. So Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, is the official budget date from the governor. So next week and Tuesday, he will announce what his formal budget looks like with all of the departments and all of the various funding sources that will come to it. There are some bills in other committees and outside of education that could impact us. Probably the biggest one that Elizabeth and I just talked about this morning is there does appear to be some traction building for paid family leave for, for staff members, which is one of those that I think is a, again, a very positive intent to help out families. I'm concerned about the sustainability of that. If it just becomes another expense districts have to incur. Because if it's something that the state could fund short-term, but then in the long term, that falls to districts. I think I just, I want that to be, make sure that's thought through carefully. I don't think it's a negative thing. I think it's positive that families have access to that. We just have to make sure it works for us as an employer. So we're watching that carefully as we get into that. The first deadline that we're paying attention to is really early March, before they have to have some of those, those first bills through committee, get things going. And Legislative Committee and I will work on that, and we'll continue to keep you all informed.
Could you remind the board what, that all that compensatory funds that we receive, what, what does that get spent on in our district?
Staff primarily. So it's looking primarily at intervention staff. We use it for some classroom teachers to reduce class size from time to time. There are some materials that come along with it, but it primarily, Title, Title I funding and compensatory funding is the primary driver of our intervention teaching staff. I would say in general.
And that's what we use it for, or that's what it's available for?
That's what we use it for, because you have to use it directly to serve students. So I don't, in the districts I've worked in, that's pretty much what we use it for, what it's used for.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. We'll move on then to our financial and enrollment reports from Elizabeth.
Good evening, can you guys all hear me okay?
Yes, you're good.
Okay, great. Just want to thank you for your time this evening. We, on the basis, we link in reports that talk about our expenditures, our revenues, and our monthly enrollment. So just kind of as a quick flash through, or we have provided here. Sorry, are you guys getting still? Okay.
Yeah, it's a little bit, you know, you're, you're okay.
Okay, I'll keep this one through, and I apologize for the echo. With the funders, what we do for one of them is to look at a certain time. So we can, we're right now, we're comparing the month of December from this year's budget to last year's budget. And we look at all of the different quarters or the different funds that we have within the district just to make sure that we're tracking correctly with what our budget is and what our major expenditure are. The two main factors that I focus on, because those should track pretty closely from year to year, are our Southland Home Pits, because they make about forty-five percent of our budget. As you can kind of see through all of the three categories, so many of them are tracking appropriately based on this year, the prior year. We do look at other areas, might be certain areas that we have spent more in or less year to year. All of that is due to timing, when projects are occurring, social equipment, the equipment. That did vary from year to year on timing. But the time, the time tried and true numbers that you really do want to focus on are best. So another way to look at, first, we've got one report that is a two-year glance, and then next report is a three-year glance. And back to believe, somebody had made a comment about, you know, there are ways you could look at things differently and get, and this was actually the reason. Somebody had brought this back from the MSBA conference way a few years ago. Something that we could have, just a bit of information, graphs, and then in a three-year glance, year glance. So this is a suggestion that we need, and so I just, I just warned the board as well as, if you look at other districts, or you go to conferences, or MSBA, you can think and you say, hey, is this something that we could do? Share it with me, I'd be happy to see if that's something that's possible, and that is, is our. So again, this is your glance of our futures. Sometimes we have a year, maybe we have those years that we don't hit like a COVID year. And so the normal year versus the COVID year versus our group home year again. So, as you can see, again, that red flag, that's the main area of our budget, and we're very nice looking. We do look at all of our forms. So you can see our thirty-three million dollar budget, we have about three million to go as of December. Right, we do the same for our home years as well. The largest is our state for general fund, about seventy-five percent of the budget. Again, some of it is timing, especially with the lockdowns. Sometimes the payment comes in December versus February, but right now, everything is tracking as we can anticipate. Some of it is timing of when we have all of our reports done in December versus the time that we want to report as well. So if there are some things that stand out to me, if we can indicate we already recorded this yet or not yet, but right now, there's outstanding to make me pause and what, what's happening. The other thing that I want to mention is that enrollment information. Kind of back to our revenue, our enrollment really drives a majority of our revenue. So enrollment drives this revenue, which again is seventy-five percent of our general fund. As you can see, the monthly enrollment summary, so we have a five-year complete plan. This year is going very similarly to where we were last year. And we will use this to tighten up our current, which we are revising. And then as Mr. Smith had mentioned, in our fiscal year twenty-four budget. So this will help us to instrument some estimates on what our fiscal year twenty-four budget would be based on, based on our enrollment currently, as well as our four-year old numbers coming from potential kindergartners. The other thing I want to mention, I'm going to share with you here. As a reminder, with as much information on my site as possible, tools, information, including, lots of different ways to look at our district from status. So if you go to our, under departments and district office, there's a couple of different categories I wanted to point out for your reference. How many is available to you? You know, sometimes when you're looking at reports, you might say, well, what, what is community statistics? Or what is our consumer needs? What does that make up? If you go to district budget, that'll expand you. You can go to all of the budgets that are out here. You can go to any year that you'd like, twenty-two, twenty-three, we'll expand that one. And if you go to the bottom, our preliminary budget, and so that has a narrative behind the numbers of our budget, all of our budget book. So that gives a little bit more information on the decisions that we made about that budget, what creates the budget. It gives those definitions on what all those different ones containing, what can you use funds for, maybe restrictions for those funds. It just gives a little bit more information on those numbers. It also involves graphs, the actual forms itself, as well as legislative information. There are a lot of good information to try to put into that budget book. This is information we talked about last night. This is the information that we're required to post in our official newspaper. So that is there. We'll mark and put our final, the middle, central part of the budget. We'll add that out here on the website as well. And so if you, twenty-one, twenty-two, you'll have, you should have your documents for each school year. If you are, kind of how that changed for our budgets. Other things to point out that are available to you, if you click on signings, you scroll down a little bit, there's some more information out there. Blocks of order, the funding plans, that's the total dollars that we recently allocated. Our truth and tax people that we had last December, that will update it to the most recent presentation. We also have the manuals available to company. This just accounts with transparency and provides accurate clues to our stakeholders. We've run it all over and over, and we have the check that we can replace for these people. And then the other thing to show you, all of our statements will be out here as well. You can fit it. I think we try to keep a fair amount of our funding out here. If ones are added, we will continue to add to this website. I'm not going to click on this one, but I wanted to let you know it's available. This financing education, so it really kind of, that organization I'm part of, Mass Mo Minnesota Association of School Business Officials, put together a couple months ago for our community in person. I thought I'd, I'd a quick video to help people understand how education finance is in Minnesota. So again, I highly recommend you review that video, it's very long, and maybe just move into that ninth step to school finance. So anybody have any questions, comments, anything else?
Yeah, I don't think any questions, but thank you for the remind, well, the general report, but thank you for the reminder about how to find things and what all is on the website. That's always good to see that, so.
Absolutely.
All right, moving on then to our committee and board member reports. And Lindsay, I'm wondering if you would mind going first tonight?
I guess I could go first. It's really busy at the school right now, so I'll try to keep it brief. But I'll start with our sports team. So our boys' basketball and our girls' hockey team both won on Tuesday. The girls' hockey game was very exciting. I was there, they scored three goals in the last five minutes of the game. It was great. I heard when that the boys' hockey beat Laverne, which was a big win. They're really excited about it. And our gymnastics team also beat Saint James, both JV and varsity. So we're really proud of how our sports teams are doing. On tomorrow, the boys' basketball team is home, and the girls' hockey, I believe, is also home. And girls' basketball will be at Fairmont, so we are cheering all of our sports teams on. Also tomorrow is our music department burger fry. It's at the Legion from five-thirty PM to seven PM, and tickets are nine dollars at the door. We would love. And tickets are $9 at the door. We would love to have you come and support our music department. And for entertainment, the Wasika jazz bands will be performing, so we're super excited about that. The one-act play has performances this weekend. The play is How to Succeed in High School Without Really Trying. It's, it's pretty funny. It kind of plays into the stereotypes of high school. And it has, it's funny for everyone from elementary kids to and up, honestly. It's, it's great. It's really lighthearted. Those performances are Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 2:00 PM. There is no admission fee, but we are accepting free will donations. And as we go and compete with this one-act, we will be going to a festival at St. Peter on Monday to get judged. And then we have a week to prepare before the 28th of Saturday, which is our subsection competition at Medford. And we are very excited. We are hoping that we will advance to sections this year. Snow week is coming up, and student council is getting ready to plan the dress-up days. And our talent show is going to be on that Monday. The dance will be on the Thursday of homecoming week. And we will have the dodgeball tournament as our new tradition, as well as the senior ice cream social on the Friday. So we're really excited about home, or not homecoming, snow week and all of the events. Student council is also planning some service projects to do at Hartley specifically. We are, we'll be volunteering again for Hartley conferences and helping watch students that while their parents are at conferences. I heard it was really fun when they did it first trimester, so we're excited to help out again. We will also be reading to Hartley students for I Love To Read Month. This is, it was my favorite thing last year. They're so fun. And they ask the best questions after the book. And then we are starting something new titled something along lines of like Blue Jay Buddies. And it'll be student council members staying in touch with, I think, our third grade students. And we'll be able to go over and help out their class or just write them letters. And we're hoping that this could start this year. We're pretty excited about it. We always love staying connected with our elementary schools. And then finally, our show choir, Stage Street, and Showtime are preparing for our first competition, February 11th in La Crosse. We got a new choreographer, and the choreography is intense, but it's really fun. So we're excited to compete.
You are busy over at that.
Yeah, it's really busy. It's fun though. It's a good time of the year.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that report. Charlie, do you have anything to add today?
Is this committee report then?
Committee, or if, you can do your MSBA report if you want to share that at this time too. So if you have anything you want to share from the conference.
I haven't thought much about it. The MSBA convention was interesting. We had two really excellent speakers on both days. I attended several of the breakout sessions they had, and they were all interesting. Of course, there are, there's people excited about, about the legislature. Everybody's in one corner this year. So there's been a lot of excitement about that. But other than that, I guess I'll just let, I'll let Julie and the rest of them have some more to say about that, so. And then you want to do, you want to do the?
We'll do the recognitions next.
No, no, but this is the, the committee report, okay. Okay, I was at legislative meeting Monday, and let me see here, what we all got going. We did a policy meeting committee that we're going to overview them policies tonight. And then the big one that I was to was the insurance and safety committee meeting here on the 11th. It wasn't real well-attended, but, but there was a lot of talk there about some of the things that are going on at Hartley. They talked, there's some concerns there. We got some new moms over there, and there's some concerns about the water and all that business that's going on, and then what their needs are. They talked a little bit about the high-wash stations. Colin, Colin was there and then talked a lot about these various things. We've got some annual testing going on. There's going to be the fire marshal tests in, in March and early April. The ERK training, and so there's just lots of, lots of stuff going on in the, in the safety, safety issue. Keeping our staff safe and keeping our, our students safe, so I guess I won't say much more about that, so I think that's it.
All right, well, thank you. Theron, do you have anything you want to share?
I sat in the policy meeting here a week ago and all learned some of the, some of the footwork on that. And nothing got too crazy and out of hand. So, but no, not, not too much yet at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I went to my first finance committee meeting. Not really much to report from that, just getting my feet wet there, so that's all I have.
Okay. We did have legislative, but Eric gave a really good summary of what we're focused on as a committee for this session, so thank you. I went to my first professional growth and development meeting this, this Monday. That was really interesting. Since that was also Professional Development Day, they had like immediate feedback from the staff that are part of that committee. And one feedback was to offer some of these, some of the sessions give a virtual option so staff wouldn't have to travel between buildings quite as much as what they're doing. So, so that was good feedback. And then we reviewed the building surveys that the students took earlier this year. And that was really interesting just to get feedback from students on their learning and just in general what's going on in their buildings. So they, they were separated into three different surveys. It was pre-K to two, and then three to sixth, grades three to six, and then grade seven to 12. So that was really interesting to hear from staff about, and also we heard from staff what's going on in their buildings. And, and overall, I walked away with how important our professional development days really are, and so that our staff really does take those seriously. For me, from the MSBA conference, I had an opportunity to attend the Phase Two training. This is, I think, at least the third time that I've taken that training. So, so a lot of it is just kind of a refresher for me, but it's always really good training. And a couple of minor things that I, made me think a little bit more about. So if there's, some of the stuff about like what, what, what we include in our agenda were kind of some of the things that I, I thought about. But I really enjoyed the keynote speaker on Thursday. I wasn't able to attend on Friday. But Eric mentioned in his update this week that one of the takeaways was the three E's for our graduates, which would be, your option would be enrolling in a college, enlisting, or employment. And so I thought that was a really great way to think of what we think of as preparing our students for life after high school. And those, that definitely, the three E's definitely summed that up. I attended a session about financial tools for facility improvements, which is interesting since we're definitely having this facility talk. The big one, of course, is a bond referendum, but also the importance of maximizing our areas agricultural tax credits. Talking about using earnings from investments, abatement bonds, other things like that. So there's lots of tools out there. It's just a matter of how you package it all into what your needs might be. And then I attended a session on the science of reading, which was really interesting to me. And it addressed the following reading scores, not just in Minnesota or in our district, but really nationally. And then this is not a new problem, but that the science of reading is a multi-tiered system of support. And that the district literacy plan should align with this. And my impression is our district is doing this work, particularly since we're sending staff to the letters training that's offered at the state level, and that's really a first step. And so I know our district has started this, and it was really, just going to that session just kind of reinforced what I know our district is always, is already doing. But I really enjoyed it, so I wanted to share that with all of you. So that's all I have. So, Adida.
My policy committee was covered. That's all that I had.
Okay. I do not have anything. All right, thank you.
Excuse me. I was part of legislative and finance, but I think we've reviewed those already. I had a lot of notes also from the MSBA conference. You've covered a lot of them. Again, I did go to, there was a pre-session on working through conflict, and they talked about a lot in there of, you know, when there's a conflict, what's, what's really underneath that? There's probably issues and interests, and people's interests are really underneath that. So trying to uncover that can get to why there really is a conflict and can help address that better. Again, the keynotes, as both of you said, were all very good. I saw one also on school speech legalities and what the school can and should do and cannot do, and it offered some really good guidance and ideas on how that works. Various ones on bonds and levies, one on monthly financial reporting, open meeting laws. There's also some opportunities to see student showcases, like certain districts that did things. There was one district that had a manufacturing, a class that was really, this class was a manufacturing company for that hour of the day. And they had a project manager and an office manager, and they kind of built that role. So I think those students, and I asked them, they said they really got a great experience to understand how business can run. There was one on a, see, they offer students a chance to be their own CEO and kind of develop their business. And I asked the students after they kind of described it, I said, does that make a difference to what you want to do? And they both said, yeah, I had no idea before, and now I know what I wanted to, I want to do this, I want to do that. So it's, it is really good to see how some of those programs can really guide them into knowing what they want to do. It was a great conference for anybody, anyone who couldn't go. It's, I thought it was well worth the couple of days that it took to do that. So it's, it's worth it hearing, getting ideas. It helps reinforce a lot of things that our district already does, but also other ideas that can, that we can do.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, moving on then to recognitions and positive board feedback. Do you want to start us off, Dave? You got a newspaper out here, so.
Sure, yeah. Well, as usual, I have more than one. Looking at the newspaper here, there was an article back at the end of December, and I'm just going to read kind of, it just says Wasika Junior Senior High School held its annual food drive in the month of December. Students and staff collected over 900 food items and over $2,200. The food drive included a grade-level competition, which was won by the senior class. And of course, right in the middle of the picture is our old Lindsay Kopatsky. Just a couple of other things. One is there's ALC graduation tomorrow. I think there's going to be several students graduating from the ALC. That's always a, a good thing. Want to mention that. And then I just happened to be looking at the website, and on our website, I saw, it looks like a recent picture of some students at the high school, and they were named and given a certificate, Blue Jay All-Stars. You know much about that?
The AAA winners, is that what?
At the high school, called Blue Jay All-Stars. And I tried to get some more information on that from the principals today, and I wasn't able to connect with them, so.
I think it was some, isn't it something where it's several students per grade are kind of recognized for?
Yeah, like a, a doing well in the classroom, or I think a teacher nominates them and they have a breakfast.
Yeah, I see the picture now. Yeah, it's the first trimester winners.
Yeah, yeah. I thought that was pretty neat.
It's cool.
Yeah. That's all.
Thanks, Dave. Theron, do you have anything you want to recognize tonight?
I guess a couple of things that I was involved, went to a wrestling match last week. Watched, watched the varsity wrestle St. James. We brought the youth wrestlers up to form a tunnel for them to run out on. It was pretty cool. Other than that, no, I haven't been involved with too much this week.
Okay. That is cool. I love when they bring the youth, youth organizations up for, for varsity level event. That's really neat.
We did have, I think, well, the youth, we took them down to Nuritzen for a K6 tournament two, two weekends ago.
Charlie?
Basketball. I've been to many, many basketball games in the last, in the last few weeks, and also the boys are doing well. They're, they're getting, they get better every day. A super aggressive bunch of kids. There is, there's some tough competition going on out there, and our boys are, and girls are really stepping up to the plate to get it done. And so congratulations to them all. That's, I think they're doing a great job this year, so.
Thank you.
All right, I guess I have two. One is to our BPA and DECA students. I forgot to talk about them. We had many, many of them advance to our state competitions, and we're super excited to send such a big representation from Wasika to our state competition. And then my other is to all the teachers with the snow days that the students love. We recognize, though, that it does kind of mess with lesson plans, and we're thankful for their flexibility and for their reassurance that, yes, we will still take this test. Don't worry. Your assignments are still due at the same time. But we just appreciate all that they do for us and their hard work.
I appreciate the communication to the students about that. That's good. Yes. Good. Thank you, Lindsay.
I'm going to piggyback off what Theron said too, that, you know, the younger, the WBA Basketball Association gets all the younger kids involved in those. You know, we have good high school teams because that starts early, so hats off to all the people who work with kids younger and get them going. Also, you mentioned in your update also that Bill Kuchel has had, I think, our, some of the programs he's working now they can get college credit for. I mean, I think he's really put a lot into that program to really bring it up to the next. We've talked about the three E's, being employable or enrolled. It's, I think his program really helps students be ready. When they graduate, they're ready to go do something, and that's been really good. And he also has, I think the robotics team got some extra awards here last week at their last competition, and he helps run that too, so congratulations to them.
Thank you. Alyssa, do you have anything you want to share tonight?
I've just seen a lot about the, the younger girls and boys at the basketball games lately, so that's been fun to see. And then I know that the community ed gymnastics team has a meet on Sunday, I believe, this weekend, so good luck to them.
Is that a home meet or?
No.
Okay.
No.
I went to WIS yesterday, just a visit, and I want to say thank you to Dave, who took me there, and John, who spent over one hour walking us through and talking and explaining stuff. It was very interesting.
Nice, good. All right, well, I was going to mention the BPA. It was 33 students are going on to state. And I don't, I can't remember what the DECA number is, but, but yeah, that was, so thanks, Lindsay, for beating me to the punch. But I also, just because I was at the PG and D meeting on Monday, I do want to recognize and thank all of our staff for all the effort they put into the professional development days. This Monday was an all-staff day, and so in addition to, I'm sure their curriculum development and academic related things, that we also offered, I think, two or three different CPR classes, which is neat that we, that we're able to offer that as well. But I appreciate that all of our staff, not just our teachers, are taking advantage of these developmental, development opportunities. And especially a thank you to Brooke McGuire for, I know, all the work that, that she puts into these days to make them meaningful, so. All right, I think that's all then for recognitions and positive board feedback. Are you ready to move on to action items? Okay. All right, first item of business is we need to appoint a board member to replace Katie Youngberg as our Minnesota State High School League representative through June. So that's normally an appointment that happens in July, and then it's for a year from there. And can you explain kind of what the duties of that representative might be?
Right, yeah. So each year in July, when we re, when we renew our membership with the High School League, we're required to name representatives from our district. So we have a staff, boys' sports rep, that's Joe Head of our, girls' sport rep, that's Joan Conway, and a school board member rep as well. The role is quite minimal. You basically are on an email list that you get information from the High School League from time to time when they send them things out. And if there's anything that is specific to board members, your role would be to then report that back to the rest of the board. I don't believe there's any in-person meetings currently for that particular role. It just is really a communication piece with everything. Joe and I will get most of the operational things. It's just the occasional update that the board members might want to be aware of. So, but we are still required by statute to have somebody as a board member identified, which is wonderful. And I know David reached out saying he would be interested in that. But obviously, we're open up to anybody else on the board who would be interested in that conversation.
Yeah, so, so yeah, so Dave is interested in being our representative on that. If there's no objection, and someone, or if someone else is interested, we can vote on it. But if there's no objection to Dave and someone wants to make a motion, that is fine also, so.
I'll make a motion to a court of faith. Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? I will say this came up in one of my sessions at the MSBA conference last week, and I think someone said that they've been the rep for like three years, and I don't, and they haven't had to do anything the whole time. But I do appreciate having someone who's, if you do, if something comes across, you're like, hey, the rest of the board should know about this. That's, that's really good, so. All right, if there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion to approve, or for item B?
I'll make a motion that we approve acceptance of the gifts and donations, of which there are quite a few.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Yeah, there's quite the list totaling just over $7,000. So thank you to everyone for your donations. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote, and this is a roll call vote. So Caitlin, you can read the roll.
Grant Shepard?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Adida Mansfield?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Theron Kruger?
Yes.
Charlie Preve?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Uh, motion carries unanimous. Uh, can I get a motion then for item C?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve a resolution directing the administration to make recommendations regarding programming and staffing for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
Okay.
Um, resolution directing the administration to make recommendations regarding programming and staffing for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Whereas the financial condition of the school district dictates, the school district may require reallocation of resources between programs for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. And whereas there may be reductions in student, student enrollments within specific programs and/or grade levels. And whereas this reduction in expenditures may require discontinuance, discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or cur, curtailment of programs. And whereas a determin, termination must be made as to which teachers' contracts must be terminated or not renewed and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting discontinuance of positions, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number eight twenty-nine as follows, that the school board hereby directs superintendent of schools and the administration to consider the reduction and/or discontinuance of programs or positions to accomplish economies in the school district as a result of reductions in enrollment and/or funding and to make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a first and we had a second from Adida. Um, any other, or do you want to, any discussion?
The only thing I would add to this is this is really something that, that we do every year in the sense of looking at what our budget comes up for the next school year and what adjustments we have to make. Um, this actual resolution is part of a legislative process that we need to follow. Should we ever get to the point where we have to put a continuing contract staff member on requested leave, then there would be a look back period that did we follow this process? Um, as we've talked at length, that doesn't mean we're gonna do that this year, but this, we want to put our, because we are making some right sizing decisions here this next year, we want to make sure we put our processes in place. And really, we should do this, um, for best practice every January so that we just put ourselves in position, uh, to make decisions along the way. Now, as this resolution is very clear, this is a direction to re, uh, review things, make recommendations, and then come back to the board here later in the spring with some ideas. So the board does obviously have another level of approval to any final decisions that are recommended. So this is just right now, the approval to start the process, which is, um, required by law. Should we end up getting to a point where we have to ULA any tenured staff, which I don't know that we're there, but we have to put our, put ourselves in a position in case we would be.
Yep. Any other questions or discussion? All right. Uh, hearing none, uh, I will call for a vote and this is a roll call also. So Caitlin, if you could please read the roll.
Grant Shepard?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Adida Mansfield?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Darren Kruger?
Yes.
Charlie Preeb?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes. All right. Uh, motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item D?
I make a motion to approve ESC and speech staff sharing agreement with ISD two-one-six-eight and RHEG.
Okay. First and a second. Any discussion? Just that this one and item E are just, these are just annual things if we're steering, steering staff.
Correct. And, and one thing that is interest, that would be of note is they do sometimes come up during the school year as student need changes and move staff around. That's part of why it meant you would see it in January versus beginning of the school year thing.
How long have we been doing this for?
Working with those four districts. Elizabeth, preceding your time?
Yeah. Predating me as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. So at least fifteen years.
Over fifteen.
Okay.
Is that agreement changed at all during that time or how is that?
Well, the only agreement, how this agreement would work is basically we just share staff cost. That's there. There isn't an, there isn't an agreement that, that really, um, obligates us to do anything else other than, other than share staff when we need to. And we all share part of Heather and Linda's costs.
Like our, our main collaboration is that they, that we all share our director. That's the main. And so this is like a separate, we're also gonna share the staff member or members. So.
Otherwise they're, they're their own independent districts with, they've got going on.
And do we share that per like how many students are coming from their district?
Right. Right. So, so in this case, this would be a staff member that would work part of the time in our district and then go to their district for part of the time and serve students there.
Okay.
Yeah. We wouldn't have a staff.
Yeah. Oh, I get it. Yeah.
If they came to us, then we would, wouldn't have this.
I get what you're saying. Yeah.
Any other discussion? All right. Uh, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Uh, can I get a motion for item E?
I'll make a motion to approve the ECRC staff sharing agreement with ISD twenty-one, forty-three.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Then again, this is basically the same issue that we just discussed. So. All right. Uh, if there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item F?
I can make a motion for item F, approve seniority list as presented.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion?
I had noted reviewing the list, there are a lot of teachers who have zero prior experience, which means they started here and they've been here for a long time. So that's very helpful. Thank you.
Any other?
I was surprised when I looked at it.
Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion, motion for item G?
I'll make a motion to approve the disposal of the twenty-sixteen microbus, bird twenty-nine passenger bus.
Second.
Uh, first and a second. Any discussion?
I guess I have a question just to, cause I don't know much about it. What was that all used for?
Transporting preschool students.
Preschool?
Yeah.
And we have a different means than that?
Right now, we don't off gen, offer general, general preschool, uh, transportation for our generalized students. Special education students might have access to that. And I know our bus companies do work particularly with families who have other needs to try to get them here if they need it. Um, that was part of our community ed, uh, budget discussions a few years ago was to, that was, we didn't, our driver retired, we'd need another driver to replace him. And the economy of not offering transportation helped us get out of, out under water in our preschool a little bit.
And was that available to all, all attendees for, uh, preschool at that time?
At that time it was.
That's why we leave work to bring our kid to preschool. I get you.
Yes. Yes. And it was really a, it was really a challenging thing where you'd have one student over here and it was really inefficient use of staff time. Um, good service for students. And we've talked about different ways to, to support that again. It's a ongoing conversation, but this bus is probably not part of it, the solution. Yeah.
Uh, any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Uh, moving on then to, uh, just acknowledge our superintendent mid-year evaluation. Um, so this was done in December with our, um, superintendent evaluation committee, which is myself, Adida, and then Katie Youngberg at the time. We met with Mr. Huthsith on December twentieth, twenty-two to review the superintendent's twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three goals and mid-year progress. And this follows Wasika Public Schools District Policy three-zero-four. Um, so for goal one in the area of student achievement, uh, Mr. Huthsith reports that all department and building vision cards and goal setting meetings have been updated and are in motion for twenty-two, twenty-three. He is preparing a mid-year benchmark of district vision, vision cards present to the board in February. And, uh, the world's best workforce report given in December indicates progress in multiple academic areas with areas to grow as well. For goal two in the area of community engagement, Mr. Huthsith shared a need to adjust communication strategies in regards to implement weather alerts and is working with the bus companies to improve their communication with families. Uh, coffee with the superintendent dates have been established for twenty-twenty-three and weekly email updates to the school board remain consistent. Uh, facilities communication and engagement plan will be completed and the board will be prepared to continue facilities conversations in twenty-twenty-three. For goal three in the area of budget stabilization, the revised twenty-two, twenty-three budget process will begin in January, along with the plan for budget adjustments and stabilizations for twenty-three, twenty-four. Substantial progress in this plan will be made in January. And for goal four in the area of personal growth, Mr. Huthsith continues to make progress in his doctoral program with coursework nearing completion and work continuing on his dissertation. Uh, coursework, research, and an internship continue to benefit Mr. Huthsith and our district as he considers ways to implement what he's learned into practice in our district. Um, it is the opinion of the committee that Mr. Huthsith is making excellent progress towards his twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three annual goals. And this is submitted to the school board, um, during our meeting today, January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. So, so again, this is just part of our, um, policy and we'll do an end of year, um, evaluation in June, July. So. All right. Uh, continuing. Can I get a motion for item I?
I'd like a motion to approve the individual twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Wasika Public Schools contract for district-wide communication assistant.
Second.
Uh, first and a second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Uh, can I get a motion for item J?
Make a motion to approve reviewed policies as listed in our agenda. Do you want me to call which one?
Yeah. Just the numbers are fine.
Seven oh two, seven oh three, seven oh four, seven oh five, seven oh six, seven oh seven.
Right. Thank you. Uh, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, first and a second. Any discussion? Thank you to the policy committee for doing the review work on it. All right. If there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item K?
I'll motion item K, approve revised policies.
And that is policy five-twenty-four?
Five-twenty-four. Yep.
I'll second that.
Uh, first and a second. Uh, any discussion? All right. Uh, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And then, um, item L is acknowledging that we have a first reading of revised policy number seven-zero-eight. Um, and if there's no objections to, um, any of the revisions in this policy, we'll approve it at our next meeting. So. All right. That brings us to the end of our action items. Um, some upcoming items and reminders. And Caitlin, I actually added a couple of things. So we have the ALC winter graduation that, uh, Dave mentioned. That's tomorrow at one. Um, y'all should have received an email from me. If you, if you're able to come, that's great. If not, um, it's, it's fine. So I think there's two or three students that are graduating. Um, and I just thought I would mention, cause, uh, Mr. Huthsith has been putting these in his weekly updates, but it doesn't hurt for the public to know as well. But next week we have personnel committee, uh, that's Monday at four. And then facilities committee is Thursday at four-thirty. Um, and then for general board meetings, our next work session is February second. And our next regular meeting is February sixteenth. And of course we have the one I played this weekend and burger fry and a whole bunch of stuff going on all over the district. So, um, anything else? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.